Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call the Town of Cromwell Public Hearing to order at 5:33. I'll begin by reading the legal notice, and then at that point, I will open it up to citizens' comments. So, legal notice, Town of Cromwell. The Town Council of the Town of Cromwell, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 25th, at 5:30 in the Cromwell Town Hall Council Chambers located at 41 West Street, Cromwell, Connecticut. For the purpose of this hearing is to obtain public input and comments on the changes that have been proposed by the Charter Revision Commission to the Cromwell Town Charter. The Cromwell Town Council will hold a special meeting immediately following the public hearing in the Cromwell Council Chambers in Cromwell Town Hall. Copies of the proposed changes to the Town Charter will be available for review in the Town Clerk's Office, the library, and on the town's website, www.cromwellct.com, dated at Cromwell, Connecticut, this 8th day of August 2025. James Demetriadis, Mayor for the Town Council. So, the way we'll run the public hearing is members of the public have the opportunity to approach the diocese and the podium and provide any public feedback that they have. I'll begin by recognizing the Chair of the Committee to give an initial presentation, and then follow, open up comments to the rest of the public. If you are from the public, I just ask that you state your name and your home address for the record, and we look forward to hearing from you all, and thank you all for coming out this evening. So Chairman Kanata, whenever you're ready. All right, Mike Kanata, 136 Nuxill Road, Cromwell, Chairman of the Charter Revision Commission. And there are a number of Charter Revision Commission members here tonight. Thank you very much for showing. So briefly, what I'm going to go through is the same thing I went through at our last... Okay, so I'm going to briefly go over what I went over at the last meeting, and that's the sheet from Carrie Olson with the bullet points of our changes. I'm going to start with number one. 2.02 adds a sentence acknowledging that the mayor is an ex officio, non-voting member of all boards and commissions. This hearkens back to the days of the selectmen type of government that we used to have, and the first selectman was, in fact, an ex officio member of all boards and commissions. So we're bringing the charter in line with what we previously had. Number two, 2.06, it assigns the role of deputy mayor to the person receiving the highest number of votes for the council at the general municipal election. Presently, the deputy mayor is chosen by the town councilors, and it is not in the hands of the voters. What this does is this puts the deputy mayor position in the hands of the voters as being the highest vote getter of all the town council members. Again, this goes back to giving more power to the voters and less power to people making appointments. Number three, 2.07, it grants the council the authority to appoint a new council member or mayor in the event of a vacancy, but only for the term ending with the next municipal election. What this goes to is this puts the mayor's office and the town councilor's offices, elected offices, in line with every other elected board and commission in town, where if a person has a four-year term and leaves town, for example, after a year, this board would appoint someone to fill that position, but only for a year, not for the end of the term. And at the next election, which occurs every two years, again, the voters would have the right to choose, takes, gives the choice to the voters, and away from the appointing authority. Number four, clears up titles and duties of various department directors for the town. This is, this is more of a bookkeeping type of thing, changing titles to reflect what they actually do. It's really a non-event. Number five, and, I'm sorry, number four refers to 4.03. Number five in our charter refers to 4.08 and 4.12. And again, it changes these directors' terms to listing indefinite, which is what is in line with the rest of the town's directors. Number six, and this is one that is substantive and expensive. Number six, 4.19, it creates a Director of Human Resources. What I said to you last time, and I stand by it, is Cromwell is a $65 million a year business. It's a business that is being run by the town council and by our town manager, and we have no full-time Director of Human Resources. The town manager has handled that position, quite aptly, I might add, for a number of years, but there is no $65 million a year business, I think, in the state of Connecticut that doesn't have a separate and distinct Human Resources Director. This change will allow for that. Number seven refers to 5.04, and number eight refers to 5.05 within the charter. And what those two sections in the charter are are for the town clerk and the tax collector. We have previously attempted to make the town clerk and the tax collector hired positions within the town. The last three charter revisions that we've been through, the voters have resoundingly said, "No, they do not want to give up their right to elect." Our problem is that those two positions are two-year terms. And the certification process and the educational process that needs to happen for those two positions could be a three-year educational and certification process. So it makes absolutely no sense to have a two-year term on a three-year educational and certification process. What this is doing is it's bringing those two positions up to at least a four-year elected position, so they will have time to get their certifications, get their education, and do their job within those offices. Number nine, it's basically other non-substantive changes that clean up and make consistent use of various terms within the charter. Examples include general municipal election, his/her, the Director of Finance/Town Treasurer. Again, this is a non-substantive change and more of a bookkeeping and clerical item. Number 10, it changes the date of the charter to 2025, and it changes the effective date to January 1st, 2026. Again, that's just what has to happen. The other thing I'd like to raise and bring up, and I know that Joanne Doyle's here tonight. If it's possible, and I defer to the town attorney on this, if it's possible, it would be great to have the tax collector and the town clerk's four-year terms be retroactive with this charter revision, if this charter revision is passed as such. I'll defer to the town attorney. If it's not possible, I, we do what we can, and this go-around their terms will continue to be two years. We're very definitely up against the clock, and I don't know that it's possible, but again, I defer to Carrie. I don't know that it's not. I'll let her speak to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for the chairman? Okay, just want to reiterate what we said at the last Town Council meeting. Thank you for your leadership and stewardship of this commission.
Very well.
On a very short timetable, but we appreciate all the work that you've done.
It was definitely a run for the cash. Thanks.
Attorney Olson, do you want to address any of the points before we open it to other commission members in the public?
I think Mike did a great job of summarizing everything that the Charter Revision Commission wanted to do. Again, I don't make policy, I'm just the lawyer. I do have some significant concerns about the timeframe if we were to change the draft report at this point. And so, I hate to say it, but a lot of that falls on your lap. Depends on whether you agree with the changes. You would have to send it back, they would have to vote, and then send it back again. And so, and we are up against the clock. I can't... 5th of September? 5th of September, this needs to be submitted to the Secretary of the State. So it is a little scary.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the retroactivity question, just as from a, is that something that's possible legally? Or is it because it's effective January of '26, it would be not effective for this election?
So, again, if they agreed with the charter revisions, I would think that we would want to put something in there that suggests that the four-year term would commence on January 1st, 2026, even though the election is in November.
Oh, so that, the language that Mike, the language that Mike quoted would be sufficient for that, do you think? Mike said that the charter would be effective January 1, 20... Is that sufficient for the enforcement of that?
Well, obviously, the tax collector, and they're voted in November, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and what we would have to do is make sure that we amended the charter to make it clear that their four-year term starts in January, but that they will hold office from November to January 1st.
So if we were to make that change, it's not in the current draft? We'd have to send it back to Charter Revision, have another hearing? Would we need another public hearing as well?
You would not need another public hearing if they abide it by your request.
Okay, and how long do they have to notice, would they have, for any changes we make this evening, to notice another meeting? So what's the soonest turnaround that they could publish and notice a meeting?
That would depend on the commission.
Yeah, I worked with Cassidy, our admin, and she has a meeting scheduled for us on Wednesday. So in the event you were to make changes tonight, we could accept those changes at Wednesday's meeting. Then I believe it has to come back to you again. You would have to have another Town Council meeting to accept the amended recommendations and draft from us to you again. You don't, as I read the Connecticut General Statute, you don't need another public hearing, but you would need another Town Council meeting between Wednesday and the 5th.
So there doesn't need to be public notice?
There doesn't have to be public notice of your meeting.
But the meeting only requires 24 hours of public notice.
24 hours, okay.
A public hearing requires a minimum of five days and maximum of 15.
But there are, we've satisfied the public hearing requirements at this point? Because we've had four. This is the fourth.
This public hearing tonight satisfies the public hearing requirements of your body.
Okay.
Assuming, you know, if we have anything so...
Obviously, it's cleaner if we just wait and have it, you know, commence with the next municipal election. But again, if you're inclined and you think we can, you know, crunch this out, we can make it work.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
Thank you. Any other comments from you, Attorney Olson, before we turn it over to the public?
Not unless you have questions of me.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you for your work on this as well.
Well, thank you, Jake. You were, you were a heavy participant, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, with that, I will open it up to members of the other commission members and members of the public. Anyone's welcome now to go to the podium and address the council.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Joanne Doyle, a Bel Air Manor, Cromwell.
Yeah, it is.
And I am also the town clerk here in town. So I just wanted to echo what Mr. Kanata said. I am very much in favor of and hoping that the term, the four-year term, would start... We had talked about the wording being effective immediately, or right after the election, or when the charter goes into effect, and I would defer to Attorney Olson, but she did a wonderful job of answering the question. I just wanted to make one point. The last day for the municipality, for the town, Town Council, to approve the questions on the ballot is September 5th. And then September 19th, I have to present it to the Secretary of State, so... September 5th is, is the deadline for, you know, to approve the questions. So I just wanted to clear that up.
I love that. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I did, at the request of, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
The request of Mike this afternoon. I did, went and directed your questions.
Yep.
Have you received them?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good. So, yeah, that's good. I just wanted to make sure we had them. Yeah, it was last minute.
Okay, great.
Nope, you're good, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
No, thank you for all the work that your office does.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you. Oh, yeah.
I think it should be clearly understood, if it was to be changed, it wouldn't be for a full four-year term starting on January 1st, because then you'd have to have a special election every January. And the reason that it was, the way it was written, was so that those two positions ran in conjunction with the council. They will now be independent elections in the off-years.
Okay, so if you, if you run it, so your point is if you run it effective this, it'll be on the off-cycle, not with the mayor and the council, versus being on the on-cycle, being with the mayor and the council? Got it?
Yeah, so if you want to change it, council has to come up with language that would allow it to be the remainder of a four-year term effective January 1st until the next municipal election, which would be 20, would be the off-cycle of the council.
Yep, okay, gotcha.
Four years from that point?
No, no, you want to get them, you want to get them in sync with November. So it would be the remainder of a four-year term. That would be, so that's, if this is 25, 29 would be that election, but the council would be running in '27. So it wouldn't be in conjunction with the council.
27 and a half, 31.
No, I think the, he's just pointing out that, do we want town clerk and tax collector to be in conjunction with the council or not? I guess, just, or do we want it to be on the...
Right, right now, the proposal is a four-year term in conjunction with the council. But if it takes effect in January, then you only want it to be the remainder of a term that until the next, until the municipal, she'll have to spell it out, the municipal election of November of '29. Correct, Counselor?
Yes, and it's certainly cleaner to wait, and I appreciate, don't get, certainly cleaner to wait and have a ticket after the charter's done. And again, we don't know what the voter's asking.
Yeah, okay, noted, noted. All righty, we'll continue to move along, though, and we can have our discussion about it during our regular meeting, or special meeting. Any other members of the public that wish to comment? Yes, Ms. Kelly?
A council member is a four-year term. So, like, this year, you're not up for election. So if there was a vacancy for this year, how would that work? Say that you had to have it, because you're not on the ballot.
It would be filled at the next municipal election.
Of what?
So I'll, Brian, if I can, so I'll give you an example. So we'll use the current council. So Councilwoman DeBrowski resigned. We appointed Anne to fill the remainder of her term. If this charter was in effect, Anne's seat would be up for election in November alongside, to fill the remaining two years alongside everybody else. If I were to resign today, the council would appoint a temporary mayor to fill the vacancy, and then in November, if the person who was temporary wanted to run, or somebody else wanted to run, whoever would run for the remainder of my term.
That's the remainder of your term?
Correct.
Which is four years.
Correct.
It's not a two-year term?
No.
It's a three-year term.
Nope.
So when, when a person resigns, or whatever, and say that there is three years left in the term, then you are then putting into a three-year term. It's not for the next municipal election, it's to fulfill...
Correct.
A full term, a full four-year term.
Correct.
I just wanted to have that understood.
Hundred percent, correct. No, no, it's to fill the remainder of our, it's to, so if, if it's not for a new four-year term, it's for the rest of the four-year term.
The balance.
The balance.
Yeah, but it's not even for the three years. There's three years left. Let's see if somebody...
Balance, whatever the balance is, which would be two, or would always be two years.
Isn't there a 45-day...
Let's just say it would never exceed two years, right? So, so again, if somebody dropped out six months into their four-year term, they would only get a year and a half.
And that would mean that they would not be in sync with the rest of the council?
Right.
Yes, because they would be appointed until the next municipal election, right?
Right, but, when you say... Okay, let's say I dropped out today. Somebody gets appointed, they would have to run in November, right? Okay.
And they would finish your term.
And that's finish your...
Wouldn't we run for four years?
So the...
Their race would be running for the remainder of whatever they have left on their term.
Exactly, exactly. And so you get, you get back on the same page.
So everybody would be on the same page, huh?
The whole point of this, yeah, the whole point of this was the fear that, you know, everybody elects somebody, for whatever reason, they have to resign. And now, the rest of the council is appointing somebody to replace them, and the voters aren't having to say that. And so the idea was, yeah, we got to fill it, but let's let, let's let the voters decide as soon as possible.
So then they would be the only one, then, on the next municipal election for the council?
Yes.
No, then, no.
Yeah?
No, if, 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 look, if somebody quits six months in. The next municipal election, they would be appointed until the next municipal election.
Of what, what do you call municipal election of what terms?
Every two years. The municipal elections are every two years.
Not theirs, though. Theirs is four years.
No, that's council, municipal meaning statewide. Every two years, there is a municipal election.
Okay.
Okay, so if somebody quits, they're six months in. They get, they appoint a replacement who will take the seat for a year and a half. And then at the next municipal election, which will be that November, they run, and so can anybody else.
What?
For the remainder of the four-year term.
Oh, I see, so then they can, you can have like a primary or whatever, even though it's only one person that's going to run on the council?
It may not be only one person.
Well, I'm just saying is, so that's how that would run. That you're having, because the other people have to fill their four-year term. So you're having this person that resigned after they've been there a year. They still have three years left on their term. So then they, so what happens with the three years that's left on the term?
Okay, so the person quits after a year, or vacates. You appoint somebody for a year until the next municipal election. That election is for a two-year term to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the four years.
All right, just wanted to be sure.
And that will be a competitive municipal election. It won't be limited to the person that you, that would defeat the purpose of this whole thing. It's not going to be limited to the person that gets appointed. Anybody can run, but it gives the voters a choice as to who's going to finish those two years.
So then they would be in for two years, and then they would then, when the next term comes up with everybody, which is a four-year term?
Then they're right back on track.
Then they're right back on track, where they have to go out and run again?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, okay.
Yep, yep.
And I think... Okay, that kind of answers the question. I don't really think that, whatever. You know, I mean, it's, it's, I understand the, the politics behind it. Because, you know, but I think that if you've been elected for a four-year term and somebody resigns, then you have to go out and you have to have people come and say, Democrats and Republicans. But if it's a Republican that resigned, then, I always felt that whoever resigned, that party has the rest of the term, whether it's Republican or Democrat. And now I understand that now it's up in politics again to know that, you know, so, Democrats. Right, but the electors, okay, whatever, okay, thank you.
For as much as two years.
And you know, I think part of the rationale, too, is with, with local politics and local, a lot of it is the people themselves, not necessarily the parties that they're affiliated with. The parties matter, but I think people vote for the individual. They know them, they trust them, and they may not know the person that's been appointed. They may want to see how that person does. And then when they get appointed for the rest of the term, or when they, then the voters have the ability to say, "You know what, I'm not, I want to vote," maybe there's five candidates. "I want to pick the candidate that I feel the most comfortable with filling that seat." So I think anytime you can give voters more of a, of a plug-in say, especially because of how small of a town we are, I, I think the better, because a lot of it is personality and, and relationship-driven, and, and people want to know who they're voting for and who's serving on the council. And, and I think, you know, we've, we've had two situations come up in two years, in three years, where there's been a vacancy. So it's something that I think we need to, we needed to address, too.
And I just wanted to say is that I agree with the four-year term for both the tax collector and the town clerk. What I don't agree with is that we would not have it, that we're going to have this strange thing that they can have a four-year term now, starting, where it should be that they run this election, and then they start off with everybody in the four-year term. Otherwise, it's very confusing. I mean, so you run this time, and then when the next one comes up in 2027, then they're on line with the four-year term. Whereas you can't make it, I don't think you can make it retroactive to a four-year term to have it start now. We should just leave it alone the way that it is and not muddy the water. Thank you. Sorry, Joanne.
All righty, continuing with public comments. Are there any other public comments? As you are, come up to the mic and just say your name and your address, and we'll, and we're happy to hear your comments.
Good afternoon, Mike Widler, 512 Main Street. And you were asking for whatever input for Charter Revision, so I thought I'd add my two cents. I'm in favor of residency requirements for key positions, okay, of government, namely, department heads. For example, Town Manager, Town Planner, Town Engineer. I think those people should be living in the town they serve. There, there, and that should be, or could be written into our charter during this time. I might be a little, a little late to the game, but, you know, they probably should have done it years ago. You know, back when Cromwell was a small town, everybody seemed to know each other. Most of the people that worked at Town Hall lived in Cromwell. And, you know, I think, you know, things seemed to run better. I also think when, as I said, people live in town, they're much more familiar, you know, with their, you know, with their surroundings, they know their constituents. And I think you'll get a better job overall. I think, I think you'll get better results for the, you know, for the same money, for the same thing, just by, you know, asking department heads, "Live in Cromwell." Let's say, you know, you, you know, as these positions open up, you know, you know, let's say you have one year to move, you know, et cetera, you know, and there, there could be, you know, exceptions, extenuating circumstances, all that could be built in, you know, you know, I mean, there are exceptions. There always are. What else, what else can I add? I mean, we're all taxpayers, are essentially customers, right? We're customers. I mean, they, you know, they should be answering, right, to us, okay? So, again, I, I think you'll, I think you'll get a better government if the people that worked for us, worked in, worked, you know, for in town, lived in town, if they had... If they had skin in the game, they'll do a much better job. Any, any thoughts? Any ideas? That's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, hey, and your feedback's well taken. I think there is right now, I just looked there, for the, at least the town manager, there is a residency requirement right now in the current charter within six months.
There, there was a time when the mayor didn't live in Cromwell, okay? All right, I mean, that, listen, that's pretty bad. I mean, now's the time to, you know, build this stuff into our charter.
Yeah, no, I understand. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. James Rude, 25 High Ridge Road. As a member of the Charter Revision Commission, I would like to thank the leadership of the commission for moving us expeditiously through a very difficult and detailed document. I'd like to thank all the committee members for their diligence and thoughtfulness on discussion of many, many items within the charter. Their ability to listen to differing points of view, the ability to agree to agree, and the ability to agree to disagree. And I believe the document that's been presented to the town council is a good document for your consideration. I would also like to thank Cassidy Nimmens for her support of the commission. She was a wonderful staff, kept us out of trouble, scheduled all the meetings, provided us with all the necessary documentation. It's, it's not easy to corral a group of butterflies or much of anything else in the way of people. As part of the discussions that happened at the Charter Revision Commission, there were two things that the mayor has agreed to do. The first is to continue to focus on improving the long-term capital planning process for the town of Cromwell. We have hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of fixed assets and many of which get replaced on an ongoing basis. We're about ready to put our new middle school into service. There's lots of other capital items and I fully support that and know that the mayor will work hard on that process as well. The second is that the mayor has agreed to work with the Board of Finance to continue to improve the communication as to how we get from the approved town budget to the mill rate that gets set when we finally get our mill rate at the end of the, the budget process. And I fully support that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to give a little additional context to James's last comment there, and there was some discussion at one of the charter revision meetings about putting in a mill rate estimate requirement that the Board of Finance, before the referendum, needs to publish. Some kind of, if this budget passes, this is the range your mill rate could or, could go up and could go down. After a lot of debate about it, the Board of Finance members, some of them came to a public hearing, talked about it, felt uncomfortable putting that in the charter. But as Mr. Rude references, where we kind of left it after the discussion at the public hearing was that I will work with the Board of Finance chair to have something go out as like a newsletter or better communication, explaining and kind of demystifying the process and explaining how the mill rate impact can happen or may happen depending on the different pathways. But there were just too many variables, I think the majority felt, on the commission to put it into the charter. But we can work on something that is less formal than in the charter, but still to get the information out to voters in a different way. So I think that was really fruitful and positive. And then to his other point regarding capital planning, you know, we, I, I think we've, I've distributed at the last meeting, the Facilities Committee, Facilities and Asset Committee Proposal for Review, the Building Committee, you know, has a bunch of different names. But I, I circulated that amongst everyone and I've gotten some really good feedback so far. So I, again, I'll commit to bringing that forward to an ordinance public hearing in the future. The, any stuff of the feedback that the counselors have already given me. And then we can have the public give additional feedback too. So thank you for bringing up both of those points, Ms. Rude. It's very much appreciated. Because I think that's how we move forward. We take ideas, we percolate on them. And then the laboratory of democracy happens at the local level. So we can always, we're always making better, better ingredients and better outcomes. So thank you. Any other citizens' comments for the public hearing? Any other citizens' comments for the public hearing? I did receive one letter that I will read into the record. This is from Cass Fruein, who could not be here today. She said, "Dear members of the Cromwell Town Council, I regret that I am unable to attend this evening's meeting in person, but I wanted to submit this statement for the record to express my strong support for the Charter Revision Commission's recommended changes. As I've previously shared during public comment, I have the privilege of working alongside a dedicated group of residents on charter revision who approach this process thoughtfully, transparently, and with a shared commitment to strengthening our town government. The recommendations before you tonight reflect months of discussion, research, and community input, all with the goal of ensuring our charter continues to serve Cromwell effectively for the years to come. I'm particularly in support of the addition of a Director of Human Resources. This role is critical for modernizing our town's organizational structure, supporting our employees, and ensuring consistency and fairness in personnel management. Establishing the position brings us in line with the best practices and reinforces professional standards our community deserves. I respectfully urge the council to approve the commission's suggested changes. I believe these revisions represent a meaningful step towards improved governance, clarity, and accountability in our community. Thank you for your consideration and continued service of the residents of Cromwell. Sincerely, Cass Fruein." And any other citizens' comments? Ms. Kelly?
Alice Kelly, 47 Willbrook Road, wrote, "I just wanted a clarification. I believe that in our time that we put in the council, I believe the mayor runs separate. But if you read what's in here, the mayor now is a member of the council."
I think the, the deputy, the deputy mayor is the highest vote getter of the council.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with, I just want you to just review it again just to make sure that it was saying deputy mayor, not mayor. Oh, okay, even the top one or whatever?
Oh, the ex-officio? Yeah.
No, but also if they had to say that you left? Is it in there on that?
The charter states, the charter states separately that the mayor has the same powers as all other council members.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because the way that came up here was sound that you are now just a member of the council, but it's the deputy mayor that would be chosen by the top vote?
Correct.
The top vote of the remaining council members stands mayor. Mayor is?
Mayor's a separate one.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, that's why, I just wanted to, as I said?
Even though, even though the mayor is a member of the council?
That he has his own position?
He can see there, he can see there handling Cromwell.
Right, because he has?
I got to tell you, Alice, I have the same question. At first I said second highest vote candidate for that very reason.
Right.
And I was corrected quickly. And so, so it's the remaining council members outside, excluding the mayor.
Okay.
The remaining council members, the deputy mayor comes from, from, an appointment from them.
Right.
If there's a vacancy.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be sure that, you know. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' comments or public comments? I'll call it another time. Are there any other public or citizens' comments? Okay, hearing none. I will take a motion to close the public hearing at 6:10. Made by Paula?
Second.
Seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing at 6:10, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. And now we will start the special meeting agenda, which is to start immediately following the public hearing. I'll note for the record, the time is 6:10. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:10. We begin the public meeting, or the special meeting, with citizens' comments. Because one of the things that we committed to doing at the beginning of our term as councils, every meeting has citizens' comments in it, even if it's a special meeting. So are there any citizens' comments on either of the items or anything that you'd like the council to be aware of, citizens? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on from citizens' comments. Now we go to item C1, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Proposed Amendments to the Town Charter. And so I will open up the floor to any discussion on the proposed amendments. I believe what we'd be looking for is if we wanted to move forward, we could do a number of things. We could, we could discuss and debate each of the changes. We could adopt the recommendations in whole. We could reckon, adopt the recommendations in part, recommend an amendment, and send it back. And then the second item after we do that is if we were to accept all three, or if we were to accept all the changes today, we would need to vote to adopt the referendum questions as drafted with the insertion of today's date for question three. So, starting with the first order of business, is there any discussion or action regarding the proposed amendments to the town charter?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt all of the changes to the charter.
Okay.
As a whole?
As a whole.
I couldn't hear you.
He wants to adopt all as a whole. So no changes to the current language?
Yeah.
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
So?
Seconded, too. Thirded.
Made by Brian, seconded by Julia, and thirteded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. I will call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the proposed amendments to the charter as recommended by the Charter Revision Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. So now that the council has decided to just adopt it as it's been drafted, we now need a motion to adopt the referendum questions that have been drafted by the town attorney and send them to the Secretary of State's office. So do we want to do these as individual? Right now, the proposal is for three questions. One for human resources, one for town clerk and tax collector, and then the remaining changes to all be in a catch-all. So there'll be three questions on the ballot. So our folks, do I have any motions on that or any discussion on that?
Having read them, I, I would make a motion to accept all three questions to be placed onto the ballot.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Made by Brian, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Amanda, are we good? Oh, hold on.
Counselor, do they have to vote on every single question separately? Or should they do it as they did it in the whole?
Oh, I, I think it's fine as a whole. I mean, they're, they're in front of them. And to be honest, I'm not even sure they need to vote on the question, but?
Just to, uh, see, uh, okay.
But, you know, and if there's, if anybody's got a question as to why there are three questions, that was decided by the technician. Because they didn't want everything to go the way of the dinosaur if somebody was unhappy with one or two of the more, what we thought controversial maybe, changes? So?
Thank you, sir. And then Amanda, further, the council adopted this on today's date. So that blank will have Monday, August 25th in there. Okay, moving on to item D, which is informational items. You have an email from Sheri that the executive search firm that we were looking at didn't provide responsive information. So the town is going to be going with different options. So I'm very happy that the council asked the questions that they did and if they're not able to provide responses to query, then I think it's good that we're going somewhere else. And that is the informational item. Because this is a special meeting, we can't have any further items on the agenda. So I will now take a motion to adjourn. Motion?
Second.
Made by Al, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 6:15. Our shortest meeting ever. Congratulations. We're very gregar-